Good evening and welcome to our July 25th Beverly Hills Board of Education regular meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone, our esteemed guests here in the audience, and call upon my colleague Dr. Stern to lead us in our opening ceremonies.
Okay. Do we do this first? Or is it a question? All rise for the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to share with you, I'd like to share with you the BHUSD mission statement, vision statement, and values. Our mission is educational excellence. Our vision: Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world. Our community pledge: The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda minus item 13A, which has been pulled by staff.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Stern. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is approved, so we can get to work. Okay, Dr. Bergy, any?
What did you vote 13?
13A.
Thank you, President Margot. There was no action in closed session this evening.
Thank you. And we are moving on to a staff presentation. Did you?
Yes. Without further ado, I'm going to turn over the floor to Beverly Hills High School Principal, Mr. Drew Stewart and Cindy Dubin.
Thank you, Dr. Bergy, Board of Education. Thank you for having us tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce Cindy Dubin, who'll be up here in just a second to talk about a really exciting new opportunity that our students are going to have next year. We're going to be introducing the BHHS Career Academy. One of the most important things that we do for our students is preparing them for college and for careers. And so this, along with our CCRIs, our College and Career Readiness indicators, one of those is for pre-apprenticeship. And so what the Career Academy is going to do is similar to what our robotic students get with collaboration with JPL, similar to what our culinary students have had opportunities in. This is going to be a chance for our students to, in the hospitality realm, to go out and work in the community at several of our hotels and really gain some meaningful experience in the workforce and hopefully for some of these kids is going to be able to fuel their passion for what they're going to do after they leave us at high school. And so Cindy is going to introduce what this amazing opportunity is that we're going to start in the fall.
Thank you, Drew. Mr. Stewart. Hi.
Hi.
So first, what I'd like to do, we have a little presentation, and I'll do a general description of what the new program is and then backtrack a little bit to how we got to today, and then I'll go through details of it. So this is something that's been kind of a long time coming, several years, pre-pandemic, I should say. And so it's very exciting to be here today to go over this new program that we hope to launch in September. Basically, as Mr. Stewart says, this aligns with our district's goals and then more specifically the career department's goals of providing more work-based learning opportunities for our students. So the BHHS Career Academy is a new academy that is going to be hosted by six of our local world-class hotels, the Beverly Wilshire, Four Seasons Hotel, Laramie-Tage, the Beverly Hills Hotel, the Beverly Hilton, the Peninsula Beverly Hills, and Walthall for Story at Beverly Hills. It's really impressive and very thrilling. Next slide, please. Okay, so, thank you. And we have our amazing KBEV students. Thank you for jumping on this. Okay, so basically, this is a business immersion experience. It's really not limited to hospitality. When you think about it, hotels have every type of department, just like the city of Beverly Hills or any other big entity. There's business marketing, food and beverage, engineering, event planning, IT, and you name it, real estate, finance, law, they have everything. And so the notion that we have local business partners who are excited to welcome our students on their campuses is really incredible because what better place to see models of presentation and confidence and how you can go through life but at a world-class level than these five-star world-class hotels? So our hope is that the students through the academy will have a tool set, basically, that will equip them with tools to present themselves, not just for careers, but for college, networking, internships, things like that. Next slide, please. So how we got here today was our goals over the past several years have been to build more relationships with our business partners to create more opportunities. And we've been doing that. Every year, we've been ad hoc, kind of having incredible experiences. I've listed a few of them for you. Some of you have been around long enough to know that our kids, our KBEV kids, got to go help with the Golden Globe Awards with the in-house media company, The Hilton, or our students helped with the employee cafeteria at The Hilton before the Golden Globes. Our Peninsula's had our students as interns, a pastry chef, marketing interns. Beverly Hills Hotel, just this January, hosted our students for Hospitality 101, a three-hour lesson where different professionals came through the conference room, spoke to them, inspired them, and actually, they talked about resumes and things like that. And then we've had kitchen tours where our chef, Rick Leece, has taken the students to see different business models. You know, they went to The Hilton to see banquet, preparing things for 2,000 to 3,000 people. They go to the Peninsula and they see how they use, you know, 100 different vendors for their kitchen, you know, certain peach vendor, certain mushroom vendor. It's all about VIP room service, and then different business models, on and on. So we're looking to build on those relationships, build more opportunities for students to learn things outside of school. And this has all kind of been percolating in our CTE Advisory Committee over the years. And then we had a really particularly dynamic meeting in April. Next slide, please. So at the April meeting, and just to recap, you know, who generally attends these meetings? We had senior hotel management, we had BHHS admin, school board members, business partners from different industries, parents of current and former students, reps from city commissions. And at this particular meeting, we had students, leaders from some of our CTE areas present how, what the programs have meant to them over the years. And as you know, I think hearing from our students is just the most direct way for people outside of our school community to understand the caliber and the potential that our students have. We have just such responsible and enthusiastic and articulate students. And I think some, you know, anyways, it's a great PR moment for our kids. So at this meeting, we took on the issue of internships. And, you know, students and parents all contact the school, they contact their counselors, they contact the Career Center, and they say, "We hear you can get us an internship." Well, it's not that easy, okay? The reality of businesses wanting to have minors on their, you know, if they're business, it's just, it doesn't happen that often. And while we were discussing this with the hotels, there's, we've had incredible GMs at all the hotels through the years. We have some new GMs at the moment who are just getting, they're just so excited about looking at ways for us to work with the students, the younger ones, before they even would have the possibility of having an internship, okay? Because they see it in their HR departments, when 18- and 20-year-olds come in to apply for jobs, oftentimes, they don't know how to present themselves properly. And so they're having an issue, and I'm not going to speak, you know, on their behalf, but anecdotally, they have an issue with qualified applicants. So it's really a win-win and possibly a theater program eventually, since we know so many of our students in our community come back to live here and stay here. So what we thought that we would do is focus and collaborate on a program geared towards our sophomores so that they can go through this academy for a year and learn the basic networking presentation tools that then, when they are positioned as a junior, senior, or graduate, a graduating senior, they'll be able to interview properly, whether it's for college or a job, and have success in finding a position. And there are also life skills, obviously. So this is just the moment in time where we're going to formalize all those anecdotal enrichment opportunities that we've had into one program with all six hotels, with these six hotels participating. Next slide, please. Okay, so what will the kids do? So it's pretty simple. They're going to go around in cohorts, once a month, to one hotel, and they will rotate. They're going to attend one workshop a month here at Beverly High in the College and Career Center. The GMs had very good feedback. You know, we were trying to distill what would make sense to do on their, in their facilities, what would make sense to do here, and things like a resume workshop, they thought, "Well, why don't we send our HR people to you and inspire the kids on your campus during a lunch?" So they're going to be going off-campus one day, coming back here in a workshop to share their experiences from their rotation, and then also hear, you know, talks from professionals. And then in addition, the really enthusiastic students will be able to apply for a signature event. And what I've asked the hotels to do is identify one or two special things that they do throughout the year, whether it's the Chinese New Year's celebration at the Peninsula, or Golden Globes Awards, or their afternoon teas, and finding a way for the kids who are super motivated to apply to assist at one of those events. And there are different rules at different hotels. Some have unions, some don't, so it will be flexible and what works for the hotels. Next slide, please. So this will be the second Wednesday of each month, beginning September 13th. It will just, it will be an hour and a half, a different hotel per month, per cohort, which I'll show you in a minute, September to April. Beverly High will provide a bus, and we're going to drop, the kids will come here to Beverly, we'll drop them off at each hotel, we'll go back and pick them up. And the students are going to be wearing little polos, the younger students and the older students, who I'll talk about in a moment hopefully, but will be wearing blazers with a little emblem. And in this way, visitors to the hotels will see a group of students, not just all, you know, randomly dressed, but in a certain proper attire for the environment in which they'll be learning. Next slide. So this is just an example of the rotation schedule. Each of the hotels has provided a liaison with whom I'm in touch, and then sometimes the GMs are CC'd on those logistics, sometimes they're not. And basically, cohorts of six or eight kids will be going around and seeing a different department at each hotel throughout the six months. And so you can see how they move around, and it's just a rotation schedule. Next slide, please. So some of the other benefits of joining the Career Academy, kids will get a certificate of completion. The second year, they'll be able to apply to be a leader, a cohort leader. They'll have access to mentors, as we all know, is so, can be so critical in one's journey. They'll be able to network for future jobs and internships. And just added in that at our July, at our June 8th meeting, one of our graduating seniors was in attendance, and she spoke, and she volunteered to walk along with one of our KBEV students, who's the rising senior, two of the HR women to their cars. And long story short, she applied for a job, and she has a job now at the Beverly Wilshire Four Seasons. So it's a real thing, which is really fantastic. You kind of can, in your head, get in your head and think that the hotels are kind of untouchable, but they're really not. And the more that they see our kids, and she's a fabulous student who's going, so she's going to set an incredible tone for what they, they know our students can do there. So it's really a win-win situation for everyone. Next slide. So eligibility, these are just the weeds of the program, but for anyone that's listening or watching or wants to spread the word, the 10, this is for 10th graders, and Mr. Seaman and I, Mr. Stewart, we spoke about the appropriate age for this. We thought about 9th graders, but then, as it was pointed out, maybe let's send out our 10th graders who do have some, some experience in the area because that maybe will have, lead towards a little bit more success on the, you know, the end of all these kids running around the hotels and stuff like that. And they're a little bit more directed by 10th grade. So 10th graders who have already, who are, will be this fall enrolled in an advanced level course, or students who've taken a gate, one of the gate classes while in BV Middle School, they have to have been approved by their prior CTE teacher, and then other factors to take into consideration are grades and discipline and things like that. And then academy cohort leaders can be 11th and 12th graders from current advanced or capstone courses, and they can apply and be selected by their teachers to be a leader of a cohort. Next slide. So we are just looking for six-rate students per cohort, so 35, 40 students, something like that, and then leaders, one or two per cohort, maybe 10 or 12 leaders as well. Next slide. We're good with the next slide? There you go. Thanks. Here's the process for launching. Today, we're presenting. We're going to open our applications on August 1st and send arrays to all the families, send a press release out. We'll have an information session at Beverly High for students who still have questions. Applications will be due the week after. Students will be notified. We'll have a meeting where kids will sign paperwork. The hotels have some of their own papers, nondisclosures and things like that, that they want the kids to sign. And then early September, they'll return their paperwork and get their swag, and then September 13th, the first day will happen. Next slide. The budget, just looking at somewhere in the $10,000 range for a bus, it's really six months. We're skipping December for swag, for little portfolios, workshops, things like that. And already, the hotels in their world-class fashion are asking if it's okay to provide refreshments for the kids. So of course, we've accepted that generous donation. Okay, so just to wrap up, in, you know, this to me will provide access across the board to students for these opportunities. It won't be who you know, you know, will get you an internship. And I think that's really critical and really exciting, because it is, those opportunities are really limited. And here, if a student is motivated and they just get to Beverly High on a Wednesday morning after they apply and they're accepted, we will do the rest. And then it's up to them to make the most of the opportunity. But I'm really thrilled that Beverly High Administration and the district are supporting this, what I think will be a template, really, for other cities and school districts. This came up years ago when we were just pie in the sky, talking about BHF Summer School and things like that. And Jonathan Prince, if you know Jonathan Prince and I, were talking about, "Oh, maybe BHF could run a hospitality school one day." Well, this is kind of where that, that concept came from. And I think that is all that I wanted to share with you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Colleagues, anything quickly?
First of all, thank you so much for developing this program. This is absolutely remarkable, and I'm really excited that our students are going to be able to get this opportunity. Really quick question. So regarding the qualifications, it mentioned that students could be eligible if recommended by their gate teachers out of the middle school. So does that mean that they didn't take a CTE program their freshman year, but then are still eligible in their 10th grade year if they did in 8th grade?
Exactly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, for everything you do with this program, and I just, we're so grateful to have you. This is a wonderful opportunity for our school district and our students, so thank you for everything you do.
Cindy, this looks amazing and almost makes me want to go back to high school. Maybe I can fit in. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work and effort, and I would assume this would just inspire other opportunities to arise and to know that, you know, our kids might meet someone who can write them a letter of rec or apply for a summer job, and one thing usually leads to another. So thank you.
Exactly right. Thank you, Drew.
Well, I want to thank you for taking the lead on this. This was a wonderful presentation, and it's an exciting new program for our kids, and I, I couldn't be more thrilled for them. And, and I know that students are going to get the information on it, and I'm going to tell you one thing, they're going to be knocking down the doors to sign up. And I think the fact that, I hope that there, there are kids outside of the, well, however they can get in, gate classes, I know, but I think there's a lot of kids that would really be, be really good for them to do this program and, and to teach them about how to meet the public and so on. So this academy sounds incredible. Thank you for your work and thank you for your report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cindy. I don't have much to add, but I'm very grateful, and I think this will be a true asset to our students.
Thank you.
What they said. I appreciate the report and the thoroughness. Thank you. We look forward to hearing more about it as it gets rolling.
Fantastic. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to consent calendar, I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items D, E, F, H, and J.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, I'll make a motion to approve the professional service agreement with David Damico.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wel. Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Rochelle, you had a question?
Yes, I would like that explained a little bit more about the leadership role that David is going to, I mean, I worked with David for a couple of years and he's absolutely wonderful. And I know that he was here with our technology and so on, but now I'm hearing about another asset that he can give us. And I would like that a little bit explained and who's going to benefit from it and, and why we need it. So I, please explain that.
So we typically with our new administrators, especially a new principal, provide a mentor. David Damico is a former principal. And I will say, the, the most important thing about when you're having the, the mentor relationship is that pairing is so critical. Oftentimes, you're with somebody that you randomly put with and it's, it's your best guess at whether that's going to be a good experience. Having this relationship already started, working together before, is going to be really beneficial. And I know that it'll be beneficial for Mr. Stewart. I, you know, equally will be beneficial for Mr. Damico as well. This is an important time to have somebody who has been a principal, that is an ally and somebody that can work with Drew from a perspective of giving really objective advice and experience. And you may not know this about David Damico, but he was like the, the mentor, like he was the, like the dog worshipper of being a mentor, like to our staff. Like, everybody went to David Damico. And now I see why. David, throughout his experience, the relationship that he has, he's a no-nonsense approach, actually, but has a full life of experiences of being an administrator. And again, most importantly is the pairing. And this is a good fit.
Is there a possibility that also we have two new assistant principals that might need some help also? And perhaps that could be generated there too? I don't know. But we have three new administrators and...
And typically, we haven't done that with our assistant principals because they're really connected to what's happening in the school. They work with their, their site principals directly. But sometimes when you're a principal, you're kind of out there on your own. It can be a pretty lonely job at times.
Well, I'm going to be in favor of it. I just looking forward to seeing David back
Yeah.
On our campus.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E. I'll make a motion for the approval of the 2023-24 professional service agreement for Amanda Lutz Beheschi.
I will second the motion.
Somebody have a question on this one?
I just wanted to have a better understanding of the TK Day and how the art class is going to fit into the programming. And also, it was great to hear that there are grant funds for TK, which I actually was unaware of. So that's nice. So I just was curious to know a little bit about the grant funds and are the funds, the same funds going to come to us every year? Where do they come from? Just a little bit more from the economic perspective in terms of TK, since it's for me a case of first impression.
Sure. Thank you. I can answer your question regarding the budgetary component?
So essentially, these were, so as you know, the, the universal TK is a new, is something new that the governor is really hoping that all districts can incorporate, or is mandating that all districts can incorporate. So whenever there's something like that, typically the government, the state will give what are called implementation grant monies. And so we received a universal pre-K funding grant in 21, 22. We got about $116,000 and that, those funds carried over into last fiscal year, 22, 23. And so we spent about $43,000 last, in, in last year of these funds. And so in 22, 23, we see, we also received an allocation for universal pre-K. And that was about $80,000. So in total, we have available about $146,000 in, in the grants. Now, this is, I have not heard of more grants. These are more intended towards the implementation of, of the universal pre-K. So that's, that's what that was for. And so we, there's a wide range of things that are allowable under these costs, like for example, creating partnerships, planning costs, hiring costs, staff training, professional development, those are all allowable costs under the 21, 22 grant. But it's also allowable under the 22, 23 grant. And the thing about the 21, 22, we have to hurry up and spend those monies, they have to be expended by June 30th of this, of 2024. And then the 22, 23 grant, we have some more time, those have to be expended by 2026. So, yeah. And I think you had a, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question about that then. If they're implementation, for implementation and we're using it for salary, and that's an ongoing salary, so how will we address that from an ongoing standpoint, once the grant funds are, are used up? And also, what other things might we need? Since I know we don't get, we don't get funding for TK, for, per student, what else do we need funding, could we use those funds for?
And so when we made the decision to expand our TK, our TK program was already receiving art services, vocal music, and other programs from our specialist teachers that were on staff, because we didn't have as many classrooms that were there in previous years. So when we brought our proposal to the Board of Education two years ago to accelerate that timeline for the advancement of TK, that was part of our discussion was, if you, and I can bring back the slides, was we would have to, in future years, closer to 2026, have to make a determination of supporting then those programs further, because the extension of additional, additional classrooms on our campus, we no longer have space within our specialist schedules. So to hire a consultant to do it is actually cheaper than to hire an additional teacher for vocal music, for art, for, I forgot, polga, we use it for physical education and for those three areas. And that was part of our initial proposal to accelerate the TK timeline. And then in 2026, when possibly the funding may run out, we will need to have that discussion of where are we going to have it? Or are we in a position of we're going to start to remove those things that were there prior to us expanding TK? So when we had one TK classroom at Horseman and one at Hawthorne, they had access to our specialist teachers on the campus. But then when we built out to three and the next year even more, we don't have as many, as much time in the schedules to be able to provide those services, hence bringing on the consultants, if that makes sense. Long-winded way to get to a quick answer.
Consultants, and that makes it, you know, it's not a permanent position where we're making that commitment from a long-term standpoint. So that's, that clarifies that for me.
Just so I understand, so this, this art teacher consultant will come into the, to each TK classroom, room? And then how, just curious to know, how many times a week or how many hours a week? And then that's one, one session per week for each of our TK classes in Hawthorne and Horseman?
Yep. And so it's twice a week per classroom at both locations, and they're 30-minute lessons. And so based off the way that we can actually fit within the academic schedule and still provide obviously instruction in science and math. And again, you got to remember TK really comes from a play standpoint. It's learning rules, regulations, how to be a student, primary focus. But we do insert timelines and calendars and some of the basic foundational math skills and English and reading. But it's twice a week, 30 minutes at both locations. Same thing with polga. If we remember, Mary Monahan's contract had come through. And then we also have a vocal music PSA that had went through as well. Amanda's was the last one for us to receive and brought to you before the start of the school year.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, and they, the other two programs are twice a week for 30 minutes. And then the rest of the remaining time is instructional-based or play-based within the classroom around structures of being a student at school.
Thank you.
Will the teacher that originally was there, and before we had to hire the extra one for the extra classes, will that teacher still take up some of the TK time also? In other words, remember now, we didn't hire somebody when we only had one class. Now we have more classes. So will the teacher that originally had only the one class still do the half hour twice a week?
Nope. So that, that original art teacher, let's say, Mrs. Federman at Hawthorne would be an example. We were able to redistribute her instructional minutes to the upper grades. So she has a primary focus of being able to instruct the upper grades and less having to focus on those earlier learners on her campus.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to put item F and H together, if you don't mind. They both deal with LMFT. I assume they're going to have the same question. So I'm going to make a motion to approve item F, the PSA with Daniel Giall, sure. And then H, the other one.
Aditi. I will second the motion.
Thank you. I, I asked for this to be pulled just because we actually offer so many services that sometimes it's hard to remember what we do offer. And so I personally would love a refresher of what mental health services do we have? You know, are they counselors? Are they LMFTs? And then where will these two folks fit into that puzzle? Please.
Sure. These are counselors. They're licensed marriage and family therapists. So they, they provide actual counseling for our students. That is separate from what our school counselors do and different from what our school psychologists do. They run groups for students. They cover a variety of, variety of areas such as grief counseling, students whose parents are experiencing divorce, they may do counseling for that. Students with, who are transitioning or have gender identity concerns, they may conduct counseling with those. These are issues that generally school staff personnel are not credentialed or licensed to address. So it's basically three lanes. We have our school counselors who handle the, the issues that school counselors handle, you know, your, your classes, things like that. You have your school psychologist who may handle accessing your educational program. And then I say in the middle are the LMFTs. And they handle things that are not traditionally discussed by school personnel, but affect them in school. So we provided these services after coming back from home instruction, because we were having, we were seeing a dramatic increase in the number of threat assessments and students with suicidal ideation and just emotional issues that were preventing them from accessing their educational program. So this is an area of emergency for us and that's why we provided those services. They were well-received. Students are accessing them. The number of threat assessments have decreased dramatically. We are able to now actually provide the level of support and access the students need to access their school program. They're not out, out in the office, they're not in crisis, they're not being hospitalized and things like that to the same level that we saw. These particular LMFTs were with us last year and did a great job and have kind of become integrated into the school, culture of the schools that they serve. Aditi will serve both elementary schools. She'll have a three-day assignment at Hawthorne, which has increased one day this year because we are opening our counseling enriched classroom for our elementary students at Hawthorne this year. And then she will serve Hawthorne, excuse me, Horseman the other two days. And then Daniel serves both our middle school and our high school counseling enriched classes and provides the therapy that's actually part of the students' IEPs in those classes. So previously, we had a different agency providing that at a much higher cost. I was able to kind of kill two birds with one stone by, probably not a good analogy, but to, to, to find a better way to provide those services at a lesser cost by pulling in the LMFT to do those services, as well as he's available on call for any crisis that are available at the high school or the middle school if, if the Norman Aid Center or the Bulldog Aid Center can't support the student.
Do you have a question, Rochelle? Otherwise, I do.
I have a question.
Don't fight. I'm not going anywhere. Everybody gets a chance.
Just to recap, so for Horseman and Hawthorne, they're splitting one MFT?
Yes.
And that's for general population?
It's gen ed popul, it's, it's anybody.
Right.
So you're doing it across the board?
Yes. Any student who has, has a crisis or needs support.
But it's not specific to IEPs or?
No.
This is the general population?
But it's also because of a CEC.
Our general issues, I should say.
Yes.
That could be for anyone.
Because when we first started, that's a very good question, Mrs. Wells. When we first began providing the services, I actually focused on our students in the gen ed population, because those were where we were having the most issues. Remember, our students who are in program either through IEPs or 504s generally are receiving a higher level of support and structure. So we are able to identify those problems or crises earlier. But we, our gen ed students who maybe were not receiving those, that level of support were in crisis. So initially, the, the push was to support the gen ed students. But it's available to any student at any time on any campus.
Right. So I just wanted everybody to understand that we, we have that support
Yes.
At Horseman and at Hawthorne.
Yes.
And then in addition to that, at BVMS, we have a full-time
Five-day-a-week.
Five-day-a-week MFT for all students.
Yes. Because that's where we were having the most.
Right. And we did that last year when we added that. And then for the high school, we have an MFT there as well.
So the MFT supports the, the counseling enriched class at the middle school and at the high school. We have, we have one class on both campuses. And then Norman Aid Center is the first line of defense, because I believe last year there were 11 MFT interns there. And then if there's something that may be of the nature, might, that maybe an intern can't handle, or it's a, it's a situation where a student is in crisis and we may need to have medical professionals come out or whatnot, we have the MFT available to, to step in and assist.
Right. And that also, we also have support in addition at BVMS through Maple Counseling
Yes.
As well.
Which will be part of the Bulldog Aid Center.
Right. And has been there already from last year.
Since last year. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So with the high school, I understand that the, the LMFT is for that, that special ed offering, that one class for those kids who need it. And I agree with you that a lot of kids who are in programming already have that structured support. But I'm, I'm still just concerned about some of the kids who are not in special ed, sort of general education kids. You said that there's like 11 interns, right?
Last year, last year, at the Maples, excuse me, at the Norman Aid Center, there were 11 MFT interns, yes, that were, that the students, all students had access to.
Right. But if they're, and they're from Maple Center, but if they're interns, then, I mean, that requires, you know, the supervision and the oversight of people at the Maple Center. So I'm just exploring the option of, you know, would it be wise to have a dedicated LMFT at the high school who's not, who sort of works in coordination with some of the interns, but is not someone who has to be supervised? You know what I mean? Because some of the high school problems are pretty deep. So I would think that, you know, if you have, it doesn't matter if you have 30 interns, those, they all need supervision and oversight by a dedicated person who holds a license. I, I don't know. It seems, it just seems like it's something to explore.
So I think the best use, or the best way to address that would be for Maple Center to provide someone to, to, who supervises the interns, because we're two separate entities. So I don't know that we could provide an LMFT to supervise Maple Center interns, because they have to sign off on their hours and, and, and provide them directives and administrative oversight. So I don't know about the mixing of the two pots of monies, which is why I keep it separate. We have had conversations and Dr. Bregge and I, and we spoke to Ally Norman Franks, Drew Stewart, and I sat down and met with her to kind of talk about some of her requests and needs. And that was one of the things that we discussed. I think that would be the cleanest. And then we can also talk about maybe carving out some time in Daniel's schedule to go to the Maple Center. But again, I think it's very important that we keep it clean so that we're not overlapping.
Yeah. I just, again, my mind is just on some of those kids who are, the garden variety kid who's having an issue and wants to talk to someone who's not in a structured program. And then if there's an intern, great. If there's a peer, great. But even better is really someone who holds a license.
Yeah. But I will say, our, our interns are very good.
No, they are good. And they get along better with the kids. I, I mean, usually they're younger, but...
They have a lot of skills. But I think, I also think that there are some things that I want to talk to Dr. Bregge about first.
Yeah, yeah.
That may be some, a, a solution to that, that may actually fill that gap.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're doing items F and H. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Last is item J.
I'll make a motion for the approval of district paid dues for membership in the Association of California School Administrators, ACSA.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Marcus. Who had a question on that one?
Yes, I I came across this item on the agenda and became somewhat alarmed by the fact that it was asking for a little over $31,000 to pay for membership for everybody that is in an administrative position, counselors, assistant principals, principals, and so on for the coming year. And this has not exactly been a district policy. And at the same time, I became aware that through conversation that we already pay for the for assistant superintendents and the superintendent, which come to something like, I believe, around $14,000 a year, as I recall. And now they're asking that we pay for their membership. And I personally did not seem to feel that this was a necessary thing at this time. We are looking at a budget that is going to be deficit. We are going to be dipping into our reserve fund because our budget is calling for it. So I don't understand the need for it. And I would like to, that's my personal opinion. And I think that we've been able to do it without. The administrators that go can relieve, give out the information and so on. And so I personally am not in favor of that.
My question would be, what is the advantage of the quantity of people in our district that join the organization?
So I'll give you a recent example as just hours ago. Meeting and talking about the strategic plan is that our school district never had the opportunity to begin networking, working with other school districts. And we stayed in-house and we had conversations among our team only. The benefit to this type of organization is, as we've talked about in our strategic planning meeting earlier, is to go out, network, share professionally, have experiences with people in other school districts that may be doing better in certain areas than what we're doing. This professional opportunity and experience is the professional development for our leaders in our school district. And and without this, we were not going to meetings and not having that exposure. And so the benefit is, you know, we could, you know, pay for people to attend meetings. You pay more when you're not a member. And and we started to branch out and started to work with other school districts that were like school districts to ours so that we could then bring in programs that you heard about earlier today, like iReady. And if you don't get out of your own bubble, then we keep reusing the same materials and resources. So as one of the examples we talked about earlier today is we need to get out and see where success is happening, where excellence is happening in other school districts. This paves the way. It is not uncommon across the entire country for school districts to pay a membership for their administrators to have this professional development.
Just for my own clarification, so as I understand it, Dr. Breggy, you yourself as our superintendent, and then Mr. Seaman, Mrs. Colin Williams, and is it also Mr. Guzman are already ACMS members? Those are the only?
That's correct.
And Mr. Horvath?
And Dr. Horvath.
And Dr. Horvath.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Thank you. And so to Rochelle's point, if we're considering, if we have budgetary considerations, which we do, but on the other hand, we do want to have exposure, access, you know, best practices and so on. In your mind, would there be a compromise? For example, that for this coming year, we would extend the membership to the principals, the three, the four principals of our schools, something like that? In your mind, would that be a step in the right direction to get your team access? You know, so that we have a compromise in terms of budget, but also, you know, positive looking?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, you know, our recommendation is that the the full team have the opportunity to, because we we are not always together. It's, you know, we have people in different areas and specialty areas. And so we're missing out when certain people can't be represented. But, you know, I think it's really important that as many of our administrators have this opportunity, you know, for our administrators, there's very little professional development out there for administration. And this is that one opportunity that is, represents administrators in the entire state. But I certainly would would advocate for, you know, as many as the board is comfortable allowing us to participate in this experience.
So to follow up with that, all of the directors, coordinators, principals, assistant principals, have they been invited to join or are you joining them regardless? And then if they join and they're not 100% in, is that the best investment?
Well, I mean, we can certainly, you know, look at the experience for this year, having everyone attend and to see what exposure and what what professional development they're going to. You know, we could certainly do that as a team to make sure that we're fully utilizing all of the experiences. When you have a strategic plan like ours, which is very unique, you know, we are, we are in many different areas, as you know from just today, as we're revamping and revising. So, you know, we're spread pretty thin, but, you know, we we think that by providing this type of experience and professional development, even to our our newest members as assistant principals, is very beneficial to them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, colleagues?
Well, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think it might be what I'd like to see, actually, because it's hard for me to wrap my mind around all of this and just out of context. So, and it is a big, big expense. And I hear what you're saying and I can see what the value is for that. I guess my question would be, since you're taking your team off and you guys are going to strategize and make planning for for this next year, is why you do that? If you could also just look at this in the context of your other professional development and and what things you would be attending and see if it's the annual membership or maybe to your point, there are certain events that everyone would go to that you might bring them, but that might not be the, that might be less than just a sweeping, we're going to do a membership for everybody. If everyone's not really going to be fully participating, maybe it is an event or two and maybe they would be better suited at other things. So I'd rather see it in the context of what your professional development is and and all of the expenses and where you think you're getting your biggest bang for the buck. And since you're going to be going off and doing, meeting as a powwow, I'd rather have you come back with that recommendation more in context. I think I'd feel more comfortable with that.
I mean, we can certainly do that.
That'd be great.
I think one thing just to keep in mind is that, you know, we we could utilize, I mean, there's hundreds of opportunities and there's hundreds of of learning opportunities out there in professional development sessions. And, you know, we could keep sending the principal, but then the principal isn't there in the school. Like, you know, this is the opportunity to be able to utilize and develop our assistant principals, who are going to be principals, that, you know, and develop their own leadership as well.
Any other questions or comments?
I just, up to now, and with everything that's been going on with the assistant superintendents and with you, Dr. Breggy, that have been attending them, we've been able to make ourselves aware of all of the things that are going on and bringing in things like N W E A and I I D L or what I think it was I D R S and. I mean, so, and some of the other things. And it didn't necessarily mean that we had to have all of these assistant superintendents, I mean, directors, assistant principals, counselors, and so on at the same time. I I just, for me, I just, I understand that it could be very helpful, but I don't think that in lieu of the fact that we're looking at now 30, you know, one year of 31,000 and the next year 31,000, it's something that's going to mount up. So I have, I, to be a money person, as you know, I tend to watch the dollars. This is not something that I feel is essential. And so for that reason, I don't think that I can support it. But if you came back later and talked about what, perhaps adjusting it a little bit, I might be more in favor of it. But just willy-nilly, as far as I'm concerned, counselors, assistant principals, directors, and so on, right down the line, I have trouble with that. So that's my personal.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. So right now, we have a motion on the floor as stands. And I didn't hear anybody, although I heard a lot of input, I didn't hear anybody want to amend the motion. So we can vote on the motion as is and see where that goes.
Please come up to the mic, Mr. Seaman. Thank you.
And I just want to put this in a financial perspective, and Raphael will back me. So every year, we currently have the Educator's Effectiveness Grant, which is about $250,000 that we have for over the next five years.
What do we have?
The Educator's Effectiveness Grant.
Yeah, Educator's Effectiveness.
Effectiveness Grant, which is a 200. It's a grant, which we, we have qualified both times. We've written it. So as I came in as an administrator, and then we just wrote another cycle, which gives us about $250,000 each year up until 2027, in addition to Title II funds, which is about $100,000 each year. So it's about $350,000 each year that we're able to suspend on our certificated staff. We have 271 certificated staff. That boils down to close to $1,200 per teacher, which we spend in a wide variety of ways, whether that is sending them directly to conferences, which we do from Stanford, to National Math Conference, to science conferences, to also paying for summer workshops, after-school, certificated hourly rates, et cetera, et cetera. And then this ask is, what Dr. Breggy is asking for is $1,000 per administrator, which does not get, sometimes they do get to go to the conferences to support their teachers, but they're not also accessible to, say, the summer workshops or that additional professional development. So when you look at certificated staff, which we are as well, you have to look at the bigger picture of what are we spending for our teachers and are we investing that into our leaders as well? So it's not us trying to steal from somebody else or take from somebody else. It's our way of saying to our leadership team, we believe in you and we want to provide you with the professional development that is necessary for us to grow as a district. And it's actually at a lesser value than what we invest in per teacher from both our Educator's Effectiveness Grant and our Title II funds.
Well, you're asking.
And putting it in perspective.
Well, you're asking, I mean, you're getting $50,000, but it's also confused for certificated teachers to attend conferences and other things that don't require membership in this particular organization. For example, we send teachers to math conferences. We send that, what do you mean? No, that, you said it's for certificated professional development.
Yeah, he said, what he was saying is from those grants, there's a certain percentage that's allocated per teacher.
Correct.
But this is about half that amount.
Yeah.
Even though it's not from the grant.
Yes.
It's not, it's not coming from the grant.
So the other example, though, is like, we've talked a lot about behavior and we've had our behavior accountability and advisory panel. You know, it's our assistant principals that are typically working in our, you know, the behavior of our students, bullying. You know, there's a lot of resources for our assistant principals to be attending sessions on behavior and restorative practices and bullying and and those types of investigations. So it's getting those people out because we have, we've targeted programs from chronic absenteeism to to student behavior. And those are typically things that like our assistant principals would be doing.
And let me explain what Dr. Breggy is also saying is, so an example is, there could be a webinar that's during lunchtime on student discipline. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to attend as a member. And the board actually, I sit on the Board of Directors, which this is it, but so they pay for my membership. But I can't attend all those webinars and then be able to record those, take that, and then be able to provide. However, by divide and conquer, their professional developments led differently than is going to a conference like we do for math. They provide webinar, state updates, curriculum, the math framework, those types of things. So like Shannon, our new API at the high school, or say Kelly Scott can attend during lunch because now it's available for them to understand and unpack the math framework instead of waiting for me to unpack it, understand it, and then bring it necessarily directly to them. It prevents the lag in professional developing the people that need it at that time. You know, director of student services, exactly that, is if there's any topics around student services related attendance-based issues, Laura might be in litigation. And then now we missed out on our opportunity to be able to get that information and provide that to our. So we are missing out on opportunities of growth.
Are these, just for my clarification, based on the numbers you provided, so does that mean it's 30, 30 of our team members at $1,000 each?
Yeah, it's roughly around that. So it's for our, it's, it's for our full leadership team. And there's 30 of us exactly, I think.
I would like to ask if we can come back and discuss this at a lot of times. So I'd like to see if we could withdraw the motion to, and however you go about this, and come back to this at the next meeting after we have a time to consider it a little bit more.
Well, let me, is there a deadline on the membership?
Well, I mean, there's no, I mean, there's just opportunities for the start of the year that we're, that we're missing. But no, there's, I mean, we could start later.
And if I may, you know, it does also offer discounted rates for conferences that just by that itself, just if you're not an ACMS member, you pay a much larger rate. So and and just in that aspect, you start saving funds by being a member by itself. You also have to remember, you know, ACMS also provides a lot of advocacy for district-related concerns with Washington DC, with the state. And there's a lot of of work that they do on that side that helps us as well. But in the, in the sense of just looking at the economics of it, you do save a lot of funds by by just being a member and not having to pay the non-member rate.
Rochelle, let me ask you a question, Rochelle. I I think that we're on the same page that this would be a good thing for at least some of our leadership teams. So if, for example, perhaps we could amend the motion so that we could leave it up to Dr. Breggy to designate however many we agree as a board, maybe 10 or 15 or up to 20, whatever we agree. And then he can go back and he can determine how he wants to allocate those number of memberships across the sites so that everybody's getting something and they can share information and so that we're moving forward, but we're, and we're not holding them back, but that he could decide ultimately who those team members are.
I think he did that already. That's why we have this motion.
Right. But what I'm suggesting, as I understand it, the motion is for 30 people's membership. And so what I'm asking, is that right? So what I'm asking Rochelle is, would you consider something like approving 15 people's membership? And then Dr. Breggy can go back and designate who that would be? Okay.
And I also could offer up other board members. So other surrounding districts actually do pay for their full leadership team. So Hawthorne Unified School District, Compton Unified School District. So some school districts that are even ADA do provide these services for their leadership teams. So I could also provide you, you know, board contacts for those other districts if there's any concerns too, to just understand why are they putting that investment into their leadership team?
Thank you. I'm going to call to the question. So.
I just have one other comment, if that's okay. My feeling is, from what I'm hearing, is that this is just very important to you. I think Dustin is active as a board member for this. And it sounds like it's a priority organization for you. And so what I said earlier is I'd like to understand a little more of the context of it, which is what we're getting. And I think it would be worthwhile to pull this and then allow you to come back. You know, maybe when you guys come back and just provide more context so that we can see it in that and and how it relates to other memberships or organizations or conferences that you're attending so that there's a comfort level on what that investment is. Because it sounds really important from what I've heard from all of you, so I hate to say no. I'd rather we just table it and get more information.
I'm okay with that.
Turn you around, Mrs. Marcus. We'll do that. The next meeting, we're going to, we'll show you.
There's a motion still on the floor, so it needs to be withdrawn.
I really would, because of the fact that we saw this the other. I, I really would, because of the fact that we saw this the other night, when I did the thing, and it's the first thing that hit me, and it was a big concern, and I, even though I, I can understand the importance of it, I just, I need time. This is not an inexpensive, $31,000 a year, in three years, could pay for a teacher. I mean, I feel that this is something that I need time to really get a feel for how well this will help us. And I'm not disagreeing with it. I just have.
I understand.
So procedurally, the motion needs to be withdrawn, accepted, and then we have to table it. So, since the motion is on the floor, Dr. Stern, you made the motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So you would need to withdraw it?
Okay. I would like to withdraw the motion of the approval of district paid dues for membership in the Association of California School Administrators, ACSA.
And I was the second, so I will withdraw my second.
And then we need to table this.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion carries four one. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we have no reports tonight, so we're going to move right on to Personnel Services.
I will make a, Personnel Services?
Yes.
Approval of the reopener agreement, oh, yeah.
I will make a motion for the approval of the reopener agreement between Beverly Hills High Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, the CSEA, Chapter Number 328.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Made by Mrs. Marcus, seconded by Dr. Stern. Any questions, colleagues?
I, just, maybe it could be explained why it's on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, board members. President Margot. This is, each year, when we have the collective bargaining agreement, the associations are able to sunshine two, up to two proposals. So, CSEA, as part of their bargaining unit, has not traditionally had a catastrophic leave bank in their bargaining unit. So I think it's a very good thing for them to do that. It's really good for our employees. It's of no cost to the district other than some clerical time to kind of send some information out, to gather the dates, or the days, from the membership, and then keep a spreadsheet. And then, if there's any type of catastrophic situation, then we have committee that, from CSEA members, as well as the district, that vote to determine if those days will be given to that employee. So it's a really good thing. Again, no cost for us, and I think it's just a really good thing for our employees.
Thank you, Dr. Horvath. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item 12A.
I'll make a motion for rejection of Claim Number 621075, second claim for damages.
Second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to 13B, we have, we removed 13A, so.
I will make a motion for the approval of land use covenant, the LUC fees, for the regulatory oversight activities at El Rosdejo School.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. Any questions on that?
If you wouldn't mind just talking about what this is, and what the impact is on the future.
Good evening, board, and President Margot, and Superintendent Bregy. So what this is, is an approval of our fees that come out of the Department of Toxic Substances Control at El Rosdejo. The reason why we have this covenant in place right now, the land use covenant, is because back in 2008, there was an underground fuel oil well tank on the site that was removed in 2008. Because of that, we had to go under DTSC review, and during our construction process. And basically, what the land use covenant did was prevented us from excavating more than twenty-two to fifteen feet below ground without their approval. So each year that we're doing construction on site, we have this land use covenant in place. And recently, in November, we submitted a letter asking for the LUC to be rescinded, and they're currently reviewing that. All that being said, what this is, is approval of the fees that they charge to do these annual reviews. So this is 2223. And then also on top of that is, it includes the review of our rescinding of the land use covenant. That was kind of a quick summary, but.
Right. And so, am I clear to understand that, so that then in the future, if approved, then we won't have to pay this fee any further?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
And do you plan on going, was it twenty-two feet?
No. So, we don't have any need to call them in to review any of our excavation operations. This is just to pay the yearly fee, and also, we're paying them to review our rescinding of the land use covenant as well. So, once they approve it, which we're hoping happens soon, we will have, we will not have to pay any more fees, and we aren't doing any excavations that deep.
So it's not that the land use covenant will no longer apply, and then we can excavate as we wish, it's that we won't need to excavate, and therefore, we don't need the land use covenant hovering?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item C.
I will make a motion to approve Amendment Number 39 to the agreement with DLR Group for Architectural and Engineering Services for the Beverly Hills High School Modernization Project.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. Any questions on that one?
Could they just explain what is the architectural and engineering services that might be needed as a result, or that are needed as a result of passing this motion?
Yes, absolutely. So, during our construction and performance of the work on the waterline along Heath Road, which was kind of adjacent to the B3-B4 project, we discovered there's a waterline that the city owns, that we, that ran through our property at the high school. Well, what we thought was the city-owned waterline. We found out during our permit process and alterations to the waterline, that in fact, the district owns the waterline. So now that we know that, we need some additional architecture and engineering services that'll help us basically put in the backflows and other systems in place that make it ours, and basically cuts the, the city's responsibility at Olympic and Moreno. So that's basically a quick summary of why we need it.
That's a very good, quick summary. Well, thank you. Any other questions?
And it's good news, so thank you.
Yes, it's good news for us. We no longer need to go to the city for any water services here at the high school.
Wonderful.
Very clear explanation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 14A.
I'll make a motion for approval of Hawthorne Elementary School North Field Turf Replacement.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Dr. Stern. Any questions on this one?
Sure, if you could just talk about it. I think it's interest, it's of interest for the community.
Good evening, board members, President Margot, Dr. Bregy. This year, when we did our testing, for GMAX testing, which is our head impact testing for all of our fields and play structures, the Hawthorne Field did not pass. The fields reached the end of useful life, meaning that the fabric itself could no longer take any additional infill. So we can't, it, there's no intervention other than replacement at this time. That's a simple explanation for it.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you on the timing. I understand it takes thirty days to implement this. So, assuming this is approved this evening, do you know if there's an opportunity for this company to start, you know, sooner than later, so that we can capitalize on the students not being there the next couple weeks?
I did ask the vendor prior to taking these steps, you know, the soonest they could possibly do it. So if they had a purchase order in hand, or signed an agreement tomorrow, let's say, they would get the materials in hand in about twenty days or so, twenty to thirty days, and there's a twenty-day or so installation process. There's no practical way to really expedite it. We can probably expedite the installation process by making it as efficient as possible, but we're pretty much looking at close to two months.
So twenty workdays, meaning a full thirty-day calendar?
Most likely. I'm sure we can get them to work on the weekends. They're going to want to get it done as quickly as possible. They know our predicament.
That would be great. Thank you.
I have a question. How old is this particular turf that's there presently?
I do not have that information at the tip of my fingers. I can find that out.
Well, I just wondered, in terms of the longevity, when you put one in, how long can it, in other words, approximate the lifeline of one of these fields?
The life expectancy is generally around ten to eleven years on the fields, when they're properly maintained.
And this is not something that, for example, could be pushed back to winter break?
Not really.
I'm just thinking operationally, and Mrs. Kaber's not here, but on her behalf.
It's going to be problematic for program. They need to get it replaced as quickly as possible. I've already spoken to Ms. Kaber when this initially came up, well, a few weeks ago, and talked to her about the impact to her programs, and that's one of the reasons we're trying to push it so quickly. It's, it's going to be a problem.
JPA.
And JPA. JPA as well.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Has the deferred maintenance got enough money to pay for this one?
Overall, yes. I'm going to have to make some adjustments on our projects. I'll work with Raphael to make those adjustments. That's a common thing with deferred maintenance. It's a moving target.
That's the thing I noticed, that was quite expensive, and going to take away from our deferred maintenance plan.
It is expensive. We'll never have to deal with this field again, I can tell you that. We're going with a pad and sand. It's a very long-lasting application.
Also, I noticed on the, the report that the turf under the TK.
Play structure.
Play structure is also intended to be replaced. We had apparently already approved of those funds back in late June. When do you see that being implemented?
That's getting installed, I believe, August 4th. It's before school starts. It's a different set of circumstances, different type of turf.
Much smaller.
Much smaller. It's over a play pad. It's just gotten to a point where that fabric's worn out and can't be repaired, and there's big holes in it, so the kids can't really move anywhere without having trip hazards.
Thank you.
Well, Ken, I would, I would say, I do not remember in my years here, which is pushing thirteen, that field ever being done, since I've been here. It might have been done beforehand, but it's at least been twelve to thirteen years, well over a decade, that that field hasn't been touched, so.
I was there when it was once a grass field.
When, when we look at the field, the actual turf started its life at about two inches in depth, and now it's just under a half inch. So it's tremendous wear, and the actual fabric itself is worn, so the infill is actually coming up through it. So.
Can I tell you?
It's worn out.
And they had that little black stuff that got all over you all the time. It was horrible.
Well, that brings up another point, is I remember during this past year, a parent asking about the material for the turf, and whether or not it was recycled tires, and they were concerned about that, any toxicity around the turf. And I think I asked this question in the Q and A, and you already had answered it, but I think for the community to know that, just to speak about the safety of the new turf, and any chemicals coming off of that.
So the infill itself will have no recycled tires, which is one of the big concerns with regard to that type of infill. We're actually using a sand infill with a padded backing underneath it, so there's no toxicity with that. With regard to the PFAAS content, there is PFAAS in the, in the plastic fabric. There always is in any kind of plastic or rubber materials that's used as a lubricant in the production process. We do have a report from the vendor. It's similar to what we'll receive for the El Rosdejo turf. That indicates that.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Just travel through time like that.
Just wanted to make sure everybody could hear you.
I thought I was hearing voices, but I'm okay now.
Thank you.
So, the, the content is actually, according to the reports, less than that, that we find in our toothbrushes. So, it's very nominal amount. And there's no way around it, unless we use an organic fabric, which does not hold up.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm going to brush my teeth with field now. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Item B.
I will move for the approval of the agreement with Weatherproofing Technologies, Inc., for the roof maintenance services.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. Any questions on this one? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the agreement with Sierra School Equipment Company for bulletin boards at Horseman.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Marcus. Any questions on this one? Are these going to be purple? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I will point out, well, just make a comment, that I noticed in the questions, that this might be something to investigate. I don't know who made the question about also for El Rosdejo, and thinking ahead, and possibly getting ahead on maybe the cost being a little bit less expensive or whatever. I don't know if it's in the plan for El Rosdejo, or what the plan is, but it was something that came up.
At El Rosdejo, we do have bulletin boards already included, so they're there.
Okay. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And for the last important issue, the first reading of our cell phone policy. So, we can do a motion. It's a first reading only, everybody, so we can.
I'll make a motion for the first reading of Board Policy 5131.8, Mobile Communication Devices.
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells and Dr. Stern. We'll start down at the end. Ms. Listen, anything on this, on this policy you would like to?
Um, nothing at this time.
Okay. Mrs. Wells?
I have no comment at this time.
Okay.
So, I really want to thank everyone for the discussion that we had last time. And Dr. Bregy, thank you for your initial draft. I actually printed it out, and I have some very minor comments that I don't mind just handing it over to you. And should you agree with them, and think that it fits into, you know, the verbiage, then I welcome you to incorporate them. It's nothing earth-shattering. It's just, I thought that, I know this is such a big deal for our community, and I think that one of the best things we can do is really flush it out, and be as concise, clear, and consistent in the policy as possible. So that's why I took the time to put my notes to paper. And so, I can, if, if my colleagues care, I can review my comments one by one here. If not, I can submit it to Dr. Bregy for his consideration. I'm happy to proceed as you wish.
No, I prefer that we go through it here, so the board is either in agreement or not. You can just put them in the.
Okay.
Changes.
Sure. So, I'll just go line by line. Okay. The Governing Board recognizes, I took out the word "that," so it would read, "The Governing Board recognizes the use of smartphones and other mobile communication devices on campus may," it says "may be beneficial to student learning," and I clarified it to just read as "may benefit student learning and well-being." And then it says, comma, "but could be disruptive of the instructional program in some circumstances." I revised it to say, "but can also disrupt the instructional program and/or school day." Period. Then it said, "The Board permits limited use of mobile communication devices." I inserted, so that it would read, "limited use of smartphones and other mobile communication devices on campus in accordance with law and the following policy."
Let me hold you right there. Anybody have any objections to those corrections?
No.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Continue.
Okay. Then, then, I personally was a little confused with the organization, and I thought that it might be better to insert, like, a bold, "The following is for TK through eighth grade." So I have no changes in Dr. Bregy's initial green paragraph. At the end, it says, "Consequences for students found with devices on and/or not out of sight will include." I wanted to insert, so that it would read, "Consequences for students using devices and/or students found with devices on and/or not out of sight will include." And then I also would like to add, comma, "without limitation," so that these are the consequences, but I think that there needs to be room for more, because I don't want the parents to say, "But you said these were only the consequences." I think we need to have a breadth of possibilities available to us. So, so far, are we okay? I'm okay. Okay. So then it's subdivided into first. So then it's subdivided into first, second, and third incident. So within the body where it says confiscate the cellphone, every time that it says cellphone, I replaced it with device, because I'm thinking that it could be more than just a cellphone.
Yep.
You know, it could be the watches and so on. So again, I just want to make it broader to give admin, you know, the breadth that they need. Okay. In the third paragraph under first incident, throughout, some places "front office" are capitalized and some places they aren't, and sorry, it's the lawyer in me, so I just made them all lowercase, because "front office" is not defined, and then that way it's just consistent through the reading. Or you can change it to "main office." It's your choice, Dr. Breggy. And I'll hand this over to you. So it reads, "Staff will document," so we have confiscate, turn the device into the front office personnel, and then the third item is staff will document the policy violation, and the device will be held by the front office until the end of the day, or, so in front of "or," I put "and," slash, exactly, "or as determined by the administrator." The device will be returned directly to the student. This is all Dr. Breggy's version. I added, "when they come to the front office to retrieve it," indicating that the burden is on the student to go to the front office to retrieve it, not the front office is supposed to find the student to deliver the device at the end of the day. Okay. Jumping down, so I'm not, so again, throughout the entire document, I subbed out cellphone, device for cellphone. And then for the second incident, I made the same comment regarding the return to the front office to retrieve. Okay? Same thing for third incident. Further down, under third incident, we have, "Student will be assigned after-school detention and a referral." So I just was curious to know if we want to designate or not what that detention, how long it is, or if we want to provide parameters, or do we want to go general for now? I can even go, "Student will be assigned after-school detention as determined by the site administrator." I'm okay with that. I just want to provide as much clarity as possible.
Yeah. I would put that it's up to the school administrator.
Okay.
And if we can just stay on that point for a second. I'm not a fan of detention for these violations. And I had asked about, and staff answered the question about, can multiple violations result in a decrease in grade? And the answer was, there's, wasn't no, but that there is, it possibly crosses a line.
There's been legal cases that have not resulted in the district's benefit when a score that is representing the student achievement of a student that's impacted by a discipline issue.
I agree with that.
Also, we're, this, so now we might have to, if, Noah, if you're interested in something like that, I would say then we would have to bifurcate the consequences to instructional period versus outside, because this is the TK through eighth grade context. So, I mean, if you want to talk about citizenship during instructional time, I would think that a teacher has enough breadth already that disruptive behavior, so on and so forth, their citizenship could be impacted by this kind of thing. But now, let's talk about, the kids are at lunchtime, and we have indicated that a seventh grader is not to have their phone out during free time. And so my question to you is, I understand why you're not such a fan of detention, but if this is now the third incident, and so then my concern is, if not detention, then what? Do you have a counteroffer?
Do I or Michael?
You, Noah.
Well, I mean, my one counteroffer was shot down, but then you would look at stuff like when they take away the privileges that certain students get.
So the language provides...
Trips, graduations, things like that. That is based on behavior.
Yes. The language provides, "Student will be assigned after-school detention and a referral." And if I understand from Dr. Scon, there will be a correlation of X number of referrals would indicate you can't go on certain class trips or something like that, as she mentioned earlier.
That's correct.
Right, but you've already gotten to three violations when you get to this referral, right? You're at thirty, your third incident, when you get the referral. I think it should weigh heavier than that, because it's a flagrant disregard of policy.
I mean, I personally am okay with this progression, but if you want to suggest something else, I'm open to hearing that as well. But so far, what I've seen, for me, is okay, is comfortable.
I respect that, and I really appreciate the work you put into this, Judy and Howard, and we agree on most of this. I, what I'm concerned about is, how many referrals does it take? Dr. Scon isn't here to answer the question, but how many referrals does it take before you lose a privilege, right? Before you can't go on a field trip, or you can't walk through graduation, all that. And if you violate these things over and over again...
Yeah. I mean, I would say, based on the conversation that we had earlier today, that that would be a site-specific thing, and I would trust the principals to determine X number of referrals equals the loss of Y privilege.
Right. But let me say this. If it's not congruent across the district in our policy, then a fifth grader can break this rule as many times as they want, perhaps, and they still get to go through the promotion ceremony, or they still get to go on a field trip. But a sixth grader does the same thing, and they lose everything quicker. There has to be parity.
Why can't we just make the consequences related? Often, they say that the best punishments, or whatever, are those that are related. So why don't we just say, they can't bring it to school the next day, or they can't have it...
Well, in this context...
The problem, Andy, is that they're going to do it anyway. That's what they've been doing. If, as they've already hit the third time, they're going to figure out a way to bring it.
Hold on. Let me answer your question with the verbiage already speaks to that, and then you guys let me know if, how we're doing. Further consequences for repeated incidents will be at the discretion of the administrator and may include, but are not limited to, daily check-in and check-out of devices with the administrator. So I think that this is clear. I think that it gives a little bit of leeway, and then I think that it does step it up following the third incident.
The other point I'd make about the referral, Noah, is you could have a referral for something else, so that's a different topic than this.
Yeah, they add up.
Well, first of all, the word referral, to me, doesn't mean very much in that. I think privileges would be, loss of privileges and things like that would be much more severe. And I'm not sure that I would go along with the administrator having to be in touch with a cellphone and so on and so forth on a continuing basis. So I don't go with that one, but I think that instead of a referral, referral could be to the nurse for something or something like that.
I think, so to your point...
Privileges.
From what I understand, depending on the school, a referral means you're, like, referred to the office or something like that, and X number of referrals add up to a loss of privilege. I really do hesitate...
That is true.
...from a board perspective to instruct the site administrators on that.
Right.
I do. I think that there is so much nuance within the, a second grader versus a sixth grader, a sixth grader versus an eighth grader. I'm worried that at this level, we would be doing too much. But I'm open to it.
No, I agree. I'd rather keep it for the site.
To me, yeah, so far, it's clear...
Read it again. Read it again.
Okay. So...
The last sentence about the third...
So the third one, what happens, and it's consistent in the first and second, is the teacher/staff will first confiscate the device, neck, then turn the device into the front office personnel. Staff will document the policy violation. The device will be held by the administration. I inserted, "until the end of the day," just so that the language all mirrors one another, "until picked up by parents and/or guardians." That's for the third one. Okay. Parents, like all of them, parents and/or guardians will be emailed a notification of the third offense. Student will be assigned after-school detention and a referral, which I think now we all understand, within the school sites, a referral has a specific meaning that I assume the children, the students, will be aware of. Okay? Further consequences for repeated incidents will be at the discretion of the administrator and may include, but are not limited to, daily check-in and check-out of devices with the administrator.
Which may be that repeat offender, as soon as that student walks in the door...
They hand it over.
They hand it over.
Yeah.
And then when they leave at the end of the day, they get that device back.
Okay.
Are we, we're okay so far?
I like it. I wonder if we could add something like, in no way will the administrator be responsible for...
Yeah. You're on point. Then the next line says, BHUSD will not be responsible for lost or stolen devices. That's good.
Yeah. I just don't want that poor teacher to have to deal with that.
Yeah. Okay. Then we move to the...
High school.
Which should have a heading to, in bold.
Yes. So that's why I have a heading in my handwritten notes. Here, I had a little bit of my own mind confusion of, do we want to subdivide, like, another heading, non-instructional time, and then a different heading of instructional time? I'll leave that to you, Michael, when you take this back for your own review.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll read it. This is what the policy already said. And you know what? I apologize for not doing a good job, that there is a progression in the first and in the second incident, and then what I ended up sharing with you was the third incident. So the progression is there. Nine through 12. Students in grades nine through 12 may use cell phones, smartphones, smartwatches. And then I inserted the word "and." And/or other mobile communication devices on campus during non-instructional time, as long as the device is utilized in accordance with law and in accordance with BP/E16163.4, student use of technology. Then it said, "Consequences for students found with devices." I inserted, "using devices." Using devices and/or students found with devices on and/or not out of sight during instructional time will include. My suggestion was that this would be moved to its own instructional time subsection, and you'll see it, Michael. Okay? So then, it's first incident. The teacher/staff will confiscate the cellphone, return the device to the student at the end of class period or school day. So then I was a little confused about that. So what is a teacher to do? I just want it to be so clear for a teacher what their obligation is, so that no one pushes back on them. So if, so we're talking about the high school. We have a sophomore who's in English class, and he pulls out his phone. The teacher takes it away.
Yes.
Are we asking that teacher to hold on to it for that hour and a half, or hour? Or are we asking the teacher to hold on to it and then give it to the office?
The high school's too big.
Yes.
It would be...
Agreed.
People aren't going to do it.
Okay.
So it would be to give it back to the student at the end of the class period.
Okay.
Then you have to erase the...
Yes. Yes. So that's fine. I'm with you so far. Are we all okay there?
Yep.
That the student is losing it for that instructional period?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Staff will document the policy violation, which is the same as all of them. Parents and/or guardians will be emailed a notification of the first offense.
Are we going to take the class period or the class day? Are you going to leave it to return it at the end of the period, or do they want to take it to the office at that point?
So let's, so we, I feel that we just agreed on, it would just be to the end of the period, meaning the teacher holds on to it, and an hour later, or whatever, returns it to the student. Staff will document the policy violation. Okay. Parents and/or guardians will be emailed a notification of the first offense.
Second.
This one is for the first.
Right, the first.
But now, let's talk about this, okay? Because I should have mentioned it earlier, but I missed it. Who carries the burden of emailing the first offense? Is, at the high school level, I think it would mean the teacher, because it's only an issue in instructional time.
Yes.
Okay. Will be emailed a notification of the first offense by...
Teacher.
I'll say by the staff who...
Yeah.
Is that how we're doing it? By the staff who took the phone?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I also want to add one thing back up a little bit. When the student is required to hand the phone over, the student must first power down the phone and then hand it over, because I don't think the teacher needs to be, you know, handling the phone, let alone getting in with the passcode or whatever, so...
But we can just do a...
Hand it ringing or something during the day.
We can just do a silent mode.
Oh, that's true.
I'm just trying to avoid as much conflict as possible by...
Right. I think it's just...
We can just go silent mode.
So just hand it, put it, a teacher, a student puts it in silent mode and hands it to the teacher?
Yeah.
They don't have to turn it off?
Yeah. But then now, going back to BVMS, let's talk about this, because the staff that, do we just want to make it across the board, that the staff member who takes the phone away is the one to email the parents? Let's go back in, at BV. A teacher is passing by and sees that the kids are using phones, the sixth graders, at lunchtime. The teacher takes the phone.
Doesn't know the kid.
Doesn't know the kid. So in that instance, perhaps it's more appropriate for the teacher to hand it to their grade-level administrator? I'm just trying to...
Well, that gets complicated, because if that person isn't there for the day, or they're not around, I mean, it gets problematic.
I mean, maybe we can leave this, maybe we're getting, I'm getting too into the weeds.
I mean, we can certainly make some updates. I think that we're going to have to make some updates anyway.
Okay. That's fine. So I'm going to put a question mark by this.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So we're still in the high school...
What are you putting a question mark next to? Sorry.
By the staff who confiscated the device.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. So we're still in high school mode. Second. So it's, I'm taking off school day, so we've determined that it will all be for class period. Except for the third one. In the event of the third one, the device will be held by the main office until picked up by the parents and/or guardians. At the, and I inserted, "at the end of the day." Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Staff will document the policy violation. Parents and/or guardians will be emailed a notification of the third offense. Student will be assigned after-school detention and a referral. Excuse me. Further consequences for repeated incidents will be at the discretion of the administrator and may include, but are not limited to, daily check-in and check-out of devices with the administrator. Again, it says, BHUSD will not be responsible for lost or stolen devices.
Or damaged. Let's add "damaged."
Yeah. Can I ask a question about that?
Because it could be damaged before...
If we take it away from them as such...
Teacher even laid hands on it.
Is there a legality about that that could be questioned in terms of if something happens, and they could say, "Well, you did this," or you...
That's exactly right.
I'm wondering if we, if that sentence will hold any water.
Yeah. I mean, they can. I mean, when we did this in my other district 10 years ago, when we took them, like, if, there was times where somebody would say it was damaged, and we, you know, it could it could have been damaged prior.
Before, yeah.
But we didn't know, and it was, you know, and parents will complain, and we just have to, to manage that. But it's, you know, it's...
It could be a problem.
It, it's everything from kids saying, look, my, my, the screen wasn't cracked when I gave it to the office. It's, it's, this is, this is a very big management issue.
Yeah. That's why I'm trying to really flush through it. I, I think it deserves our attention.
Can you say that the district will be held harmless?
No, you're just, you're not. It doesn't matter what you say.
Um, I have a question regarding this point.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. And similarly with the third offense qualification for TK through eight about the, um, turning in the phone at the beginning of the day after a third offense, who is enforcing that?
My understanding is that's after, that's beyond the third offense, right? So that's, you have the third offense, but then it, there's...
Yeah, further or more.
Further and beyond.
Then you would be at...
Further. And I, and I apologize. This, this system by CSBA, Symbly, is, is the worst software system I've seen in my entire career.
And it was down last week, too.
And, and, and just know, that's why this looks so awful.
No, don't apologize.
It just, it's the worst system on the planet.
Yeah, this is really good for us to flush through because this is, it's going to be our headache down the line, so let's take, let's do it right.
It will be a headache no matter what.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying the formatting is just absolutely, it's difficult to even, but that's the best I, I could do under the circumstances.
Yes.
I do have a call into them.
Thank you.
Because this is unprofessional looking.
Thank you. Then there is a clause that I don't take issue with, but I think that it should go all the way at the end, which reads as follows. The governing board understands that BHS site administrators may need flexibility in regard to student use of mobile communication devices on their campus. Thus, site principals, and then I, I suggest that we add and/or assistant principals, are authorized to impose a temporary ban on student use of mobile communication devices while on campus when there is a specific concern in regard to student, staff, and/or public safety. Principals implementing a temporary ban of student use of mobile communication devices on campus will notify the superintendent, staff, students, and families the reason and duration of the ban as soon as the ban is deemed necessary. My question to us is, this clause is specific to BHS, but do we want to broaden it so that it also applies to the middle school? I mean, it can apply to all the sites, but we don't have the same...
But we're, we're allowing the high school students to use their phones? We're not...
That's true.
That's why that's...
Got you. Okay. So far, so good. Then we get down to instructional time. Mobile communication devices shall be turned off. I added and put away.
Thank you, yes.
Okay? During instructional time. However, a student shall not be prohibited from possessing or using a mobile communication device under any of the following circumstances. And then there's a parenthetical reference to ed code. One, in the case of an emergency, um, I actually added the word "and," but maybe that's not appropriate if you're taking it verbatim for the ed code.
It's verbatim from ed code.
So, so my suggestions here are, I'll just put "na." Okay? Because it's not for me to change the ed code. So then that reads, I'll read it to you all if you're okay with that. In the, in the case of an emergency or in response to a perceived threat of danger, when a teacher or administrator grants permission to the student to possess or use a mobile communication device subject to any reasonable limitation imposed by that teacher or administrator, when a licensed physician or surgeon determines that the possession or use is necessary for the student's health and well-being. I had a question about this one since it relates to ed code, so it's like the law. Do we need, do we want to document a note? Or I'm just trying to understand, or do we not want to go there?
We would, we would typically ask for that.
You would.
Like if, if, in that provision, that we would ask for something in writing from a physician.
So that, so then I've inserted, so then we could always ask, we could always insert some kind of language of, you know, pursuant to the foregoing, BHUSD reserves the right to ask for supporting documentation, or something like that.
Um, I'd be hesitant to put that in the ed code portion, but it's typically is, that would be our practice anyway.
Okay.
If there is a licensed physician...
Well, these are all per, these are all for the ed code that's listed up above, that these are all the ones that are there.
They're permitted.
So I don't know how you can change any of them, then you're changing ed codes.
Yeah.
So I don't think you can change any of these.
So I'll leave that be, because it seems like you already have a method.
We do.
There. Okay. Okay. Then four, when the possession or use is required by the student's individualized education program. Okay. I think that's the last one. The next section starts with, smartphones and/or, and other mobile communication devices shall not be used in any manner which infringes, et cetera. I added to the front of this clause, notwithstanding any of the above, so that it reads, so irrespective of the above, smartphones and/or other mobile communication devices shall not be used in any manner which infringes on the privacy rights of any other person or in a man, excuse me, or in a manner which promotes unsafe or inappropriate behavior, or reflects negatively on the school, its students, or staff. If this type of use occurs, the school administration can limit or temporarily ban individuals found using devices in this way. Is this intended to be across all sites, or does this continue to be high school relevant only?
Um, at this point, this would be for, for all sites.
Okay. So then I'll make a notation so that we know that we've moved away from the high school and this is the...
Great.
You know, the all-encompassing.
Sure.
Okay. Then it continues, this is Dr. Breggy's language. The use of any electronic device, including cell phones and smartwatches, may not be used at any time in the gym locker rooms and restrooms. Okay? When a school official reasonably suspects, excuse me, that a search of a student's mobile communication device will, and, and the pre-existing language says "turn up," I, I substituted that with "lead to."
But you can't change that. It's a part of the bad board policy and AR code unless you're changing those.
I don't think so. I think that we have... Oh, that's true.
What, what were you changing? I'm sorry.
Turn up to lead to, but Rochelle makes a great point. If that's part of BP AR 5145.12, I don't want to mess with it. So I'll just put, um, confirm...
Because this has to do with search.
I, I can certainly look. This is, this is actually from the, the CSBA recommended policy.
Yeah. So then I'm going to delete my lead to. Okay?
Okay.
Then the rest says, when a student uses a mobile communication device in an unauthorized manner, the student may be disciplined and a district employee may confiscate the device. The employee shall store the device securely until it is returned to the student or turned over to the principal or designee as appropriate. Is this also BP?
No.
Mm-mm.
So my concern about...
I mean, it's, it's from the, it's just the recommended...
Yeah. My question about this clause is, have we already said so much that this clause becomes a contradiction? I don't know. I'll leave that to you. Unless you want to finalize it today.
I think you've already broken that down in every single group.
Yeah. So that, that's why my, I think the...
Yeah. That, that could be eliminated.
This could be eliminated.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Moving forward. A student may also be subject to discipline in accordance with the law, board policy, or administrative regulation for off-campus use of a mobile communication device which poses a threat or danger to the safety of students, staff, or district property, or substantially disrupts school activities.
That should be left.
That should be left. My only suggestion here is that we put an "and," so that it could be more than one of these, and/or. Okay? Then, um, the last clause was actually a burden on Dr. Breggy, the superintendent, and I wondered if this is necessary for him to do. The superintendent or designee shall inform students that the district will not be responsible for a student's mobile communication device which is brought on campus or to a school activity and is lost, stolen, or damaged. My concern here being that if you don't do this, which you're probably not going around announcing this to all the students, then you may be taking on liability. I don't know.
Or it's, what is it, in the handbook? I mean, it's, but it's, it's, it's addressed in your...
Above. So we can delete this, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So I know we've, it's a hodgepodge, but...
What?
It's here.
Okay.
Do we want to approve this and then Dr. Breggy can prepare it?
Yeah, well, we can approve the first reading, turn in with the corrections, and then he'll bring it back for a second reading. I know Dr. Stern needed to go and wanted to address something.
Sure.
So I'm going to let her do it.
Okay. I don't want to go over this whole thing now. I just think that three other sections, I just, I'd just be curious how you guys want to address this. What would be the policy in both the elementary versus, or the, the pre-high school and high school settings during a lockdown? Number one, just give it a treatment, a paragraph. I'd, I'd be curious to go, to think about that. Or shelter in place? Because, you know, we got to face facts that we're in a new era and there's going to be a handful of parents.
But we have that exception. We're good. It says that...
Okay, okay.
Yeah. In the, in the case, so these were the ed code exceptions, and number one is, in the case of an emergency or in response to a perceived threat of danger.
And it's really updating staff so that they realize that if a student proceeds that to an emergency.
Because I can understand how there are kids who want to talk to their parents. There's parents who want to check in. Cool, got it. Also, there are some amazing young teachers out there who have some, actually some very interesting voting things that they can do with phones.
Oh, yeah.
Elena, you know what I'm talking about? You know, where, where teachers like to do that.
Poll every, poll everywhere.
So I don't know if there is a way to petition on a, you know, case-by-case basis where some innovative teacher wants to do that, like a voting app with the whole phone. I just wouldn't want to...
We have that.
Do we have that as well?
Yeah. Number two, uh, number two, exact, so you're going in order...
Okay.
Of the ed code exceptions, says when a teacher or administrator grants permission...
Oh, okay.
To the student to possess, et cetera.
Oh, I thought that was more like, more for like a, a serious matter, but I didn't realize it was actually because they wanted to conduct a...
I took it for that reason.
Yeah, that's why. Could maybe, I don't know if you wanted to just give a sentence or two, that, you know, there are some events or activities which, you know, teachers enjoy and, you know, can be embraced by the class, but I don't know. That's, that's complicated because there might be some kids, given this policy, who don't take their phone to school. I mean, things, this could shift completely so that maybe it would be weird if some teacher wanted to do a whole class exercise and then there's...
Yeah.
Or some students who don't have their phone anymore.
They may not have a phone anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
And I, I think it already addresses that.
Okay.
The exception that a teacher should...
Yeah. I mean, I'm conceptually okay with that.
Okay.
Other than for the elementary school level.
Right. Okay, those are my only suggestions. Okay, I'm going to go. I was on a plane for 12 hours yesterday and I'm tired. I'm, I'm so sorry.
Okay. So we're going to, uh, we're going to approve the first reading of this policy. We have the motion and second on the floor. Judy will give those corrections that have been reviewed by the board to Dr. Breggy. We'll bring it back as a second pol, a second reading. We'll do that for August 8th. Okay. Terrific. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Breggy and staff, for getting us a policy that we can put in place.
I would like to thank Judy for the complete and thorough review of the policy and going through it like that. I thought that was fantastic.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Judy. I had, I had the exact same corrections as Judy. She just got to go first.
My pleasure. Actually, Mary mentioned, did I answer your question, Sophia?
I don't think we addressed it.
Oh, not exactly.
Can you repeat your question for me?
Yeah, sorry.
Because it's so important.
Yeah, so just to clarify, um, in regards to third, uh, third offenses at the TK level and, I guess, at the high school level, in regards to check-in, checkout policies or systems, who on admin is being held accountable for making sure that the kid turns in that device?
So, I mean, I don't know, I don't know that the board policy needs to, to speak to, to make them responsible, but I felt like everything said that further consequences can be implemented by the administration, so I would assume that whoever within the administration, they will determine what the plan is. I mean, we can guide them further, but I really want to give them the room to subdivide.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody reaches that, that level, then, you know, administrators, they, they know that if somebody's supposed to, before they come in and walk any further, that they're supposed to hand over their phone. I mean, it, it, to some of the people, that five to six percent that we talked about before, I, I currently do that anyway. So those students will know who they are.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues. Ms. Cross, how are any public comment? Thank you. Communications from board members? Sophia?
All good, thank you.
All good.
I have no comment. Thank you.
My only comment is in regard to today's strategic plan meeting. I think we said a lot, a big exchange of ideas. We were all over the place is not in, not the way to say it, but I would say we were interested in a lot of things. And I just want to thank you, Dr. Breggy, and your team for hearing us out and for sharing your thoughts. And I really am looking forward to knowing what you come back with. I'm eager. Thank you.
Ms. Marcus?
I just would like to report on a meeting that I went to yesterday, the Health and Safety Commission, and I'd like to thank Sophia for joining me and meeting the members of the commission. And they got to put her through a grilling. She answered all the questions very well, and I hope she enjoyed going. They had the usual reports from the fire department and the police department. They, the fire department, there's been about a 12% increase in calls. They have added four new firefighters, and they just finished the junior firefighters camp, which they run every other year. When I questioned them about that, they said, well, the finances is a reason for it. So they do run it and it's very, very popular. Then number two, the police department, crime is up, but so are arrests. They've made a point of trying to stress keeping your cars locked. You wonder why cars are stolen? It's because they're not locked. And they are running their police academy from September 7th, I believe, until October 26th. And last but not least, don't forget National Night Out on August 1st. We will be participating in it. I mentioned that Sophia was there. Erica Felzenthal, the commissioner, gave a report on the upcoming Wellness Day at Roxbury Park on September 10th. You raised a question with the September 10th? She listed many of the wonderful activities that are going to be there, like yoga, meditation,